Please rise for invocation by a council member. Followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor White. For those who are with us tonight, you're welcome to join us for the invocation. This evening, we are thankful for the opportunity we were given this past weekend to showcase our city through some of the traditional events that make Greenville so great. As a community, we are thankful for the time, talent, and tremendous effort that it takes to support Artisphere, our downtown market, and the Reedy River Duck Derby. Thank you to the organizers of these great events, the staff that work during these events, and the volunteers that gave their time to support them. We are also thankful for the dedication of our first responders, our Parks, Rec., and Tourism staff, and our Public Works crews who tirelessly work to make our city great, especially in times when we rely on them so heavily as we did this past weekend. We are grateful for their service. As we all continue to work for the betterment of our community, help us be thoughtful in our deliberations, not only this evening, but each day going forward. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember John Dewarke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brasington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of April 25th meeting. They'll stand approved as submitted unless there are objections. Seeing none, they are so approved. We have a three-minute clock up here. We have one resident, Mr. Brad White.
Aye.
Get three minutes to discuss something.
Thank you.
Mayor White, this is the council. Good evening.
Absolutely.
Brad White, I live at 103 Cleveland Street, Greenville. I'd like to talk with you tonight about the tower at Unity Park. First, I want to be clear that I'm a strong proponent of the park. In fact, I was in leadership Greenville Class 24 in 1996, and our class project was retaining the services of Sasaki and Associates in Boston to study and make recommendations on the Reedy River corridor. One of their key recommendations was to establish a new park along the Reedy where Unity Park is located. I was so excited about that proposal that shortly after the Sasaki plan was released, I wrote an op-ed in the Greenville News entitled "Greenville's Next Great Project." And the project I was talking about was the new park. Many years have passed, but that project is now a reality, and I applaud and commend you for your leadership and commitment in making it happen. It truly will be one of Greenville's great projects. The tower at the park has created a lot of controversy and debate, especially with the change in the funding plan, from the original plan of it being paid entirely with private funds to the current proposal for the city to pay for about half of it. I respectfully submit this suggestion to you tonight. Call a timeout on the tower. A timeout will have zero effect on the park itself. Park will open soon, and the presence or absence of a tower will not affect public use and enjoyment of it at all. What the timeout will do is give you all time to carefully and thoughtfully consider these questions. Does it make sense to spend over $5 million in accommodations and hospitality tax funds on the tower with all the other pressing needs in the city that could be addressed with these funds? What are the less expensive alternatives that can be built entirely with private funds and that can still honor veterans and first responders in a meaningful way? On this question, ask for input from NKSK, Clemson, Furman, local architects, and most importantly, the public. Just Google "designs for honoring veterans and first responders," and you will see literally thousands of ideas. Of course, you have to consider how the private donors, who have already committed funds to the tower, would react to a different and less expensive design. I predict most, if not all, of them will not have a problem with a solution that meets the objective of honoring these heroes but avoids spending any public funds. There is no rush on this. Slow down. Call a timeout. Give the public an opportunity to weigh in and resolve this issue the right way. Thank you.
You can't leave without me saying this, and I appreciate you bringing up Sasaki. It's nice to mention the history behind this whole thing, and you're right that if you remember, the Saki folks actually said, they were commissioned to look at the Reedy River, and they said, "Well, what about Upriver?" And a lot of us said, "Where?" So it's a long time in coming. I obviously respectful, I appreciate your views, but I respectfully disagree. And I particularly remember this, there was a time in our history of Falls Park where this exact same argument came up, using hospitality dollars for the Liberty Bridge. And the designers of that park literally got on an airplane and flew to Greenville and gathered your dad, myself, and the rest of the committee and said, "Don't make this mistake. If you don't do it now, you'll never do it. The Liberty Bridge is important." We'd even gone to the, we'd even gone to the trouble of creating a visual of Falls Park without the Liberty Bridge. It came down to say the Liberty Bridge will be the iconic extra feature of Falls Park, the key feature, $4.5 million hospitality money. We were impressed with Andrea Means coming down and telling us that. And we made that decision. We had lots of people say exactly the same thing. In fact, he even used the word, "Slow down, slow down, slow down." It didn't matter. The tower has been a part of this park design since Tom Keith first drew it. He drew the tower. And that's where it comes from. It's a strong vertical element in a flat plain. It needs a focal point, and that's where the first idea came around, to have that tower. But it will become the iconic piece of this park. Otherwise, it's green grass and trees, and it's very nice and everything. But that's the idea behind it. Tom Keith conceived it. It's the Liberty Bridge of this park, in my opinion, and that's how I feel about it.
I just respectfully disagree with that. The Liberty Bridge is so different from this massive tower in the middle of the park because you're looking at the waterfall of Greenville's birthplace. It's just so different.
Maybe you haven't seen the tower, but Paul Endress, whom Miguel Rosales recommended Paul to be the one to design the tower. It has three modifications in architecture. It's a stunning piece of architecture. Maybe the one that was originally, but that's not even the one that's been produced. I would just urge you to see what Paul Endress did, examine his reputation, and know that he spent a lot of time with the city council. Not everybody was on council time, a lot of time, looking at towers and things, just like you just talked about, all across the country, many different versions. What are we looking for? The Furman Tower, this tower? And he finally brought this version. Over time, it said, "No, it's too tall or too small." But a lot of people touched, even went up in bucket trucks, members of city council, to make sure the height is exactly right, high enough to see the mountains in the distance. That was the key thing, to see the vista of the mountains. Because if you don't work in City Hall, or don't work at the office towers downtown, you don't get to see that. Average, a lot of people never see it, in fact, the vista of the mountains from downtown Greenville. And that's what we did, to get it exactly right. So a lot of work has gone into it. It isn't just something somebody came up with, starting with what Tom did originally and then modified by Paul Endress, who is a world-class architect. Just make sure you've actually seen it.
I don't know if it's appropriate to get into a debate with you this evening.
It's not.
Okay.
It's not.
But I would say the park, my, one of the reasons I was so excited about the park is its focus was on the river. I think that's the key. This park is focused on the river, not on some big tower looking to the mountains.
It's not.
We were talking about the Reedy River. That's what the whole plan of Sasaki was about, Mayor.
It's not some big tower. It's a beautiful piece of art. The focus is on the waterfall at Falls Park, but that doesn't mean Liberty Bridge. It equally a great iconic image for Greenville. And it will be an iconic image for Greenville on the level and the quality of the Liberty Bridge. I just wonder if you had a chance to really look at it and see it.
I've looked at it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, before moving forward, we do have Councilmember Brasington on the call and want to make sure that we can hear him.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. It's great to have plans and ideas for parks, but you have to make it happen despite the obstacles and people, they say. Presentation, special presentation.
Is that you?
That would be me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So I am.
Have a note about that. That's okay.
I'm glad, thank you for not vetoing my special presentation. Mayor, council, and guests, thank you for indulging me for a moment while I make a special announcement that I believe we all have been anxiously awaiting. And let me just take you back very, very briefly, and I will explain this, but when I was a small child, and I'm certain that others like you, when I was a small child, I remember my parents taking my brother and me to the Independence Day fireworks on the Fourth of July. I was fascinated by the magic, and it was real magic as a child. Now, as a parent, I see the same emotions and wonder in my children, like many of you all do as well. And I know that same joy associated with fireworks can be seen with our families throughout all of Greenville. Of course, they're not only for our little ones, they're for everyone. Independence Day fireworks are a perfect time for our neighbors to gather throughout the city, where at the end of the evening, neighbors perch from a good viewing point to see these fireworks. And many other thousands of our neighbors and friends, year after year, venture downtown to see the Greenville fireworks up in close and personal. Joyous memories are made, memories that last a lifetime, from small children to grandparents alike. It's a joyous moment for our families and our country. That is why I'm thrilled today to announce, in celebration of Independence Day, the city will bring a longstanding tradition back to the city of Greenville, fireworks on the Fourth. We invite the community to join us at Unity Park on Monday, July 4th, for a spectacular fireworks show. I can't think of a more appropriate location for fireworks on Fourth than our beautiful new 60-acre park. Come early, bring a blanket, and picnic dinner, and enjoy a memorable evening as we honor our great country. I want to thank our mayor and council for their work to bring this back, and I want to thank our city manager and Angie Prosser and her staff for finding the perfect location to host fireworks on the Fourth. Thank you all very, very much.
Now, it's in plenty of time for the Fourth of July this year. We do appreciate it. Be a great venue. Okay, we have the consent agenda. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Dewarke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Those items are approved. Turning to the regular agenda, 15A.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the provision of municipal facilities consenting to and approving the issuance in one or more series from time to time of not exceeding $55 million installment purchase revenue bonds by the City of Greenville Public Facilities Corp.
So moved. But there's a second, please?
Second.
There's a second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a brief presentation just to explain the purpose of the debt and the structure, and hopefully answer any questions you all have. Thank you. So we're proposing to use an instrument called installment purchase revenue bonds. These are to defray the cost of the purchase of the public safety campus and issue the first tranche of money for the neighborhood infrastructure bonds. Next slide, please. An installment purchase revenue bond, we're providing this information because it's not a typical debt structure that you may be familiar with. It's one familiar to the city. We've used it in the past, so this is just additional background information. Under the installment purchase revenue bond, the Greenville Public Facilities Corporation will issue debt and take title to the assets that we're building, namely the public safety campus. The city will make payments to the corporation over time and gain fractional ownership of the assets. Unlike our GO bonds or revenue bonds, we're not pledging a specific revenue source or the full faith and credit of the city. We're only pledging to make the necessary repayments to the public facility corporations out of any legally available source, subject to annual council appropriation. Next slide. Facilities Corporation is a nonprofit entity created by the city to hold titles to land and assets. They issue the debt for the facilities, and we repay them. The Facilities Corporation is a three-member board appointed by city council. Next slide. Sorry. So why do we use this structure? Ultimately, it's about flexibility. We can customize our repayment plan. It's not tied to a specific revenue source. It maintains our legal debt capacity, so the city is limited by state law to issuing no more than 8% of our assessed value as GO debt. We have significant capacity for that, but we prefer to use that for emergencies or critical needs. And the IPRB is a faster, less expensive process. We can typically complete these in around 60 days and for around 70,000 versus 90 to 120 days, and, you know, roughly double the cost for a GO. Next slide. As I said, we've done this before. This will be our fourth IPRB transaction. Series 2013 and 2015 were for parking garages, and in 2016, we did an issuance to cover a variety of projects. Next slide. So what's the process? Where are we at? We did a bank RFP through our municipal advisor. Earlier this month, we received 10 bids last week. JP Morgan Chase was for a term of 15 years at 2.88% was the recommended issuer. Public sales that day of the same type of issue went for 3.3%, so we did generate interest rate savings by doing a bank placement. We're having first reading of the ordinance to create the project and the lease documents this evening. The Facilities Corporation will meet next week, or excuse me, later this week, to authorize the debt and their set of documents matching the one before you all tonight, and we'll have second reading on the 23rd and closing of the bond on the 8th. Happy to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions?
I just have one on the messaging on this. And, you know, messaging may not even come into play, but it's quick to say it's a $55 million bond for one thing, not knowing what the one thing is. We are just conveniently putting the two in one issue of Halton Road and the NIB.
Yes.
Two very different projects, two different amounts that happen to add up to $55 million that we're issuing bonds for and negotiating all at once, but I just want to be careful as that, you know, is message that that's clear. It's really two just on the singular issue.
Yes, ma'am. We're saving money by doing it once instead of twice.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Dewarke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Absane. 15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 2.933 acres of real property and 1.392 acres of adjacent right-of-way, located at 2550 North Pleasantburg Drive, and it provides the zoning designation of C3.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Yes, this is an annexation being brought forward from you through the discovery of the water covenant for this property, and we are happy that Goodwill worked with us on this annexation, and we're proud to present it before you this evening.
Motion, clerk Colerole?
Well, I have one comment.
Okay.
Shannon, congratulations. In the last two meetings, we've had more annexation requests than we've had since I've been on council. So keep up the good work, and thank you to your team very much.
We appreciate that. They've been working extremely hard. I'm very proud of the work that the planning staff does, and Austin and John have let me know we have six petitions that are going to Planning Commission in June, so I'm very proud of the annexation efforts by the planning department. Thank you for recognizing their hard work.
And they're not just annexations, they're good annexations.
We have over 21 acres tonight of the four annexations that are before you.
When do you think we'll see the West Greenville annexations?
Goes to Planning Commission in June. Mayor.
Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Dewarke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.165 acres of real property and 0.229 acre of adjacent right-of-way, located at 8 Calder Drive, and to provide the zoning designation of RDB.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Just a technical change here. In the text, it says ordinance to annex 8 Calder Drive, and I think that should be street, so I just want to bring that attention to our city attorney, just to make sure that it is accurate.
There is no Calder Drive, so it's all Calder Street.
Right. Is that your comment? That's right. Well, I just want to make sure whatever we do.
So does he need to amend? Do we need to amend it, or?
We do not. It is showing on the request for, scroll it up, please, Megan, down, I'm sorry.
See, it's right.
To the ordinance.
It's right on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sorry, that's the Scrivener's on the agenda.
All righty. Clerk Colerole?
Thank you. Councilmember Dewarke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15D.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.106 acres of real property and 0.026 acre of adjacent right-of-way, located at Anderson Road and Conwell Street, and to provide the zoning designation of RM2.
So moved. Second. Second.
Yes, sir. This annexation was approved unanimously through Planning Commission and has the support of the neighborhood. We recommend approval.
Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Dewarke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15E.
An ordinance to annex approximately 16.728 acres of real property and 0.274 acre of adjacent right-of-way, located at 804 Malden Road, and to provide the zoning designation of S1.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Questions, comments?
I have a comment and an offer of an amendment. So this property is across the street, you can see it on the map, across the street from the Palisades. Shannon, stop me if I'm wrong. I believe that's the Palisades across the street, which is Zone C3. C3 is more in keeping with our objectives of this area than S1. We've talked about S1 in the past is sort of not the zoning that we in the city would prefer to move forward with. So my recommendation, and I'd like to offer an amendment, to designate the subject property C3 versus S1, service district as applied for and recommended by the Planning Commission. The motion to amend is made with the consent of the applicant and our planning department.
Oh, cool.
We have no issue with it, and neither does the applicant. It doesn't affect their permitted use or their long-term plans for the property.
Second. Clerk Colerole?
On the amendment?
Well.
We've got to vote on the amendment.
Well, if you had the amendment, is any objection to the amendment? Do you want to vote on the amendment? Well, we'll vote on it, just make a decision.
Okay. This is to amend to C3. Councilmember Dewarke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15F.
An ordinance to amend Section 19-2.3.13, Land Development of the Code of Ordinances, by establishing subsection E, Development Naming with Procedures for Naming of Developments Reviewed by the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second, please?
Second.
Description?
Yes, this will follow a process similar to what we find currently for street naming changes within the city that are outlined both through state law and our local zoning ordinance, so that in the future, if, as the Planning Commission approves a development with a specific development name, should there be a change after the fact, they would have to go through the same process that would currently follow for street naming changes, through a public hearing process and reconsideration by the Planning Commission. This amendment did pass Planning Commission with a 42 vote, and staff did write the amendment, obviously, and were in favor of doing this change to ensure that the community is knowledgeable about any changes, and that we feel this also helps as one step further to protect public safety, especially when it comes to development names, because what happens is many times, people may not know necessarily the street or address they're at, but they may know the development. So we feel confident that it does address both public safety as well as neighborhood concerns. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
And this was driven by a recent development naming, correct?
It was, yes, sir. Staff responded to that situation through this text amendment.
Any other questions? Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Dewarke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, 15G.
An ordinance to establish a memorandum of understanding between the City of Greenville, County of Greenville, and City of Malden for the purpose of establishing a focused planning area for the area surrounding and concerning the future Woodruff Road congestion relief projects parallel road.
Good evening. As you all know, oh, sorry.
Okay, I might.
Sorry.
Your part.
Motion, second.
Apologize, sorry. As you all know from one of our recent work sessions, this is a collaborative effort amongst the staffs of the Greenville County, City of Malden, and the City of Greenville to be able to comprise together a project study area surrounding the Woodruff Road parallel project. This is part of the Woodruff Parallel Congestion Relief Project to make sure that we have a both access management plan and a land use plan in place for this area as the roadway starts to develop. It's been a great effort working with the staffs of both the City of Malden and Greenville County. Our staff has had a lot of fun in this project, and we would like to continue to work with our colleagues to bring before you a small area plan that would go to addressing this area in the long-term future. We think that it's a really good opportunity to put a plan together, put a plan in place that is irrespective of boundaries. And so we will be bringing this forward through our normal planning process, of course, if you all will agree to this memorandum of understanding as we enter into this agreement with both Greenville County and the City of Malden. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did I hear you say "fun" in the same topic as Woodruff Road?
It is fun.
I just want to make sure I understood.
It's fun.
That's unprecedented. That's unprecedented.
Lots of fun.
Fun, Woodruff Road. Got it.
Well, planning to help relieve Woodruff Road is the fun part.
That is fun.
That is fun.
Well, we've shown it, we've shown it can be done. And all of us who live in that side of town love that parallel parkway. Just amazing.
Yes, and so we want to preserve the access management and the long-term land uses along that entire strip by working together with our fellow jurisdictions to make sure that we have similar plan across the three boundaries, the three jurisdictions.
Exactly. Okay, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Mayor and council, item 16A is a resolution to approve a sale of property located at 695 Malden Road. You have a photo in front of you of the parcel. That property is owned by the Greenville Housing Fund, Your Honor, I mean, sorry, Mr. Mayor. And Sean Williams is available, I believe, on WebEx. If I can confirm that Sean, you can hear us and we can hear you. So this is owned by the Greenville Housing Authority? Authority, correct.
This is Sean Williams with the Housing Authority, City of Greenville.
Okay.
Attorneys for the Housing Fund who have.
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority. I'm so sorry, and I know that they're two separate entities, have brought to our attention a state statute that requires the approval of council for disposition of property to be redeveloped. And so that's the purpose of the resolution before you. If you have questions for Sean about the reason for the sale of the property, she's available to answer any questions that you might have. Some information in the resolution that's been presented to you for about the reasons for the sale.
What is the intended use of the property?
There is a contract to sell the property. I believe that we have a representative of the potential or the purchaser that's under a contract who can be available. It's a local school that's under contract to purchase the property.
Chris Church. Just to clear it up, this is a piece of property that's owned by the Housing Authority. They used to have a development on it, development got basically condemned because it's so close to the sanitation, not sanitation, the sewage department, the sewer over there.
Water treat.
Yeah, it can't, the treat, well, water treatment, the appropriate, proper name. It can't be redeveloped, so they need to sell it.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor, I'd need to recall that, please. I need a motion in a second before we can.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just have it. Okay.
Thanks for being with us, David.
16B?
A resolution to award $20,816 in funding received from the Greenville Zoo Conservation Fund from July 1st of 2021 to June 30th of '22 to nine designated local and international conservation programs.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor and council, I think most of you have met Phil Cooper. He's our administrator. This is exciting time. Once a year, we get to bring forth the appropriation of Quarters for Conservation, which is a portion of every zoo admission goes to conservation, which when you really, Phil has taught me a lot about zoo and it is about conservation and animal welfare. So I will let him go through the next couple slides.
Sure. So as you know, we've established a fund for local conservation projects. It's funded through Quarters for Conservation, as she said, 50 cents of every admission, $5 for every membership. There are three categories of conservation that we fund. Field conservation, conservation research and conservation education. So, thank you. So we give local grants funding priority because we love to think that conservation starts right here at home. So we were able to fund one grant locally, another grant in the United States, and we've funded seven grants in the rest of the world. We have a five-person team that selects these grants. There's a rubric, and the rubric is a measuring system that is based on the three qualifications that I gave earlier. Either they're a field conservation project, conservation research or conservation education. The total we're asking for tonight is a little over $21,000. You can flip to the last slide. And there's the grants we're actually looking to fund.
So Friends of the Reedy River is getting, I'm having trouble reading.
86.
Yes.
29.
69, 85?
29, yes.
It's the best.
Yeah, so we have, the way we do our grants, you can apply for a grant up to 3,000. The first year, you can only apply for a grant up to 1,000. We want to be able to measure the effect of this, of the grant and allow the, you know, sometimes it's a piece of a larger puzzle and we'll fund, we'll continue to fund that year after year if it's a worthy cause.
Coastal.
You have a motion, second?
So moved.
We do have a motion, second, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. 16C?
A resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a surface encroachment permit for the benefit of 117 Welburn Investments LLC and a portion of the city's right-of-way for the purpose of installing and maintaining a rear deck for the property located there at 117 Welburn Street.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.